Jim just did.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of leavens.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role?
Mayor Lacine.
Here.
Mayor Protem King.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Kimple.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
We have reached out to Councilmember Fiorito and we're waiting to hear back. We've had no indication that he would not be here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First up, is there anybody here who would like to declare if they have a conflict of interest in tonight's meeting? Okay, seen none, we'll move on from numbers from the disclosures. Next up, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Any modifications to the agenda?
I'd like to make a modification to the consent agenda, please. Moving the two resolutions in seven A and B under the consent agenda and then making a correction to the meeting minutes, number four B of June fifth. For to read seven A should read Haley Chapin, thank Councilmember Abbott for the support with the community.
Okay. Ms. Erickson, did you capture that modification? Okay, so we've had a modification to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Mayor Lacine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes six to zero. Yeah, we have to make a motion to.
I, I can I make another motion on the agenda, Ms. Murr? I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution seven A and B to the consent, consent agenda.
Oh, yours, well, she did, but we still need to accept the agenda as modified.
Okay, that's it. Okay, I move to accept the agenda as modified.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor Lacine.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, the motion passes six zero. Next up, recognition, promotional ceremony for Corporal Josh Marks and Corporal Rachel Brat, Bratton, Brayton, Bratton. Chief Reagan.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Reagan. For those of you who didn't meet me during the meet and greet, I'll be here afterwards in case you want to talk to me. This night isn't about me. It's about two very special police officers we have here in the Monument Police Department. Both have been acting. We call it acting when you're doing the job. You're just not really, didn't get credit for it. So one of the first things I wanted to do when I got here was make sure they got the credit for it. Both doing a fantastic job. Really couldn't ask anymore out of them. So it's my pleasure to officially promote them to the rank of corporal. So if you look at our rank structure, we start with the officer rank. We provide a rank called corporal and then sergeant. Our corporals are doing a lot of the same work as the sergeant, but kind of a training ground for us and an ability to provide some opportunities in a small town police department where there's not necessarily a lot. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. So we're just always looking for ways to expand opportunities, provide leadership training, leadership opportunities. And these two pretty much exemplify exactly what we're looking for. So it's my honor to present them with their badges that they've been wearing for a year, but now it's official. If you have people that you'd like to have them come up and pin these on, that'd be great.
They're not stab proof.
Oh, man. Yeah. That's, that's my way. I'd like to thank all my fellow officers. They're the reason kind of why both of us work as hard as we do to for them, why be a leader if you can't be a leader for them. And then also to the community that's been super supportive of Rachel and I for the last about five years or so. Chief Reagan, thank you for the opportunity and it's an honor. Thank you.
Um, just want to say thank you to, you know, everyone at the Monument Police Department. We've gone through a lot of changes and to have a lot of people that still, you know, invest in us at this level to help us become, you know, next commanders and chiefs and lieutenants means a lot. And, you know, thank you to the guys on the road that show us a lot of grace while we are still learning, so.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations to both officers.
Mayor, could I interrupt real quick? Tom Tharnish would like to introduce one of our newest employees to, to the council.
Counsel. Up front. Personally. Evening, Tom Council. Tom Tharnish, Federal Director, I'd like to introduce Jeremy Whiteheart, our new Assistant Federal Director. Comes to us as the former Deputy Director for the City of Milton. Just about as much experience as I have on water and roads and everything. Be a great asset to the team in these areas, help mentor and shape our department.
I just wanted to say I appreciate being here and looking forward to this opportunity and I'm sure there's just as much for me to learn as hopefully that that I could possibly also offer. Monument is a beautiful community and I think I'm a native to Colorado, so I know it quite well and I'm excited to be here and I understand the importance of that preservation and keeping Monument beautiful. So glad to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, we took him out and looked at some of the issues that I know we've had some concerns about with all the flooding and everything that's been going on. And one of them was Old Denver Road today. And I was, we had the entire crew out there looking at one of our storm drains that is really failing for us right now. And he was able immediately to take a look at it, crawled down into the drain, measured it and provided a solution for us that we're probably going to implement pretty soon and we'll be coming back to you for budget for that, so.
So he crawled into the drain already?
Yes, he has.
You bought him a new shirt, I see.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Welcome, Jeremy. Look forward to all your contributions. Next up, this is the two thousand and twenty-three Presidential Environmental Youth Project Award from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for implementing composting program. I, I was asked but just before school let out to attend Prairie Winds Elementary School to, to see these three young ladies win an award. There were federal representation from the EPA there. I think there were some state representatives as well. And I thought it would be a good idea for Monument to see what our youth is doing in the elementary school and the great hear a little bit about the project that won and what they're going to be doing next with their project. So if the young ladies would like to approach the, the bench, yes, the bench. And if you could tell us all your names and what grade you're going into and your favorite teacher that's in the audience and.
Um, hi, I'm Sun Clary and I'm in grade five and my favorite teacher is Ms. Kimple.
Um, I'm Aniba Montero. I'm going into sixth grade and my favorite teacher is also Ms. Kimple.
I'm Amelia Ashby. I'm going into the sixth grade and my favorite teacher is also Ms. Kimple.
We are in the compost years. We devoted our school year to collecting and composting green waste in our school cafeteria. We started off small with collecting compost from just our grades lunchtime, but soon progressed to collecting compost from the whole school. According to Andy Stow, our building manager, after, or we reduced the amount of trash bags when we first started to one to two trash bags a week. Then after we did the whole school, we were able to do five to two, five to six trash bags a week. After we progressed to the whole school, we went to our school's science fair and we asked for donations to get a rotating composter so we could collect even more waste. We raised two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents and quickly purchased a new composter. For us, this award shows hard work and commitment, but most of all, the dedication we put into our project. It is such an honor to know that the judges thought we were, we have such an accomplishment.
Our project, our project goal was to eliminate waste in our school cafeteria. We noticed the amount of trash bags going into landfills each week and decided to try to stop that by composting green waste. Green waste from our school cafeteria includes uneaten fruits or vegetables from children's plates. While we collected compost, we educated students on why we collect compost, what can and cannot go into the compost bin and why, and why composting is good for the earth. On Fridays during our recess, we put the compost in a variety of places. We add about a third of it to the, our school's compost pile, one third of it to our compost bin, and the rest we feed to the worms who decompose the waste. We plan to continue our project through sixth grade, which will be our last year at Prairie Winds. We leave, after we leave, we plan to keep the compost, the compost and the worm bin at our school. We hope to educate younger students about composting so we can carry on a new tradition of composting through Prairie Winds. This is such a huge opportunity for all of us. My friends and I are still in so much shock, but we did not do this all alone. There are so many amazing people who helped us along the way to this award. Special thanks to Deb Kimple, Pam Cooley, Andy Stow, all of Prakanti, and all of our parents and everybody else who has helped us along the way.
The President's Environmental Youth Award, the PEA, is for young environmentalists who want to stop pollution, climate change, and more. We entered the contest because we wanted to tell more children and adults about how the amounts of waste being put into landfills. We wanted to inform people how landfills are gigantic part contributing to pollution and why you should compost as much waste as possible. We entered two different papers, one telling what our daily process for composting is, and the other telling why we wanted to enter the contest and how our love for composting began. Soon after, we were informed that we had won the PEA award. We were asked to come to the annual video festival in Colorado with the new, with a video about our project. We are currently working on the video and are excited to present it soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was looking forward to seeing the worms again. What, what happened to the worms? During the school eating? Excellent. Okay. Is there any questions from the council to our young guests? No?
No, but I would like to say just to educate everyone that's here, along with everyone online watching or is going to watch it later on, is these three young gals are amazing that they submitted this project to compete in the entire state of Colorado. And they're one of two groups. The other group was up in Denver, I think is a group of seven kids, seven or nine kids. So these girls along with that group from Denver, they won for the entire state. Now they're going on August fourth, if I'm not mistaken, going to Washington DC to compete nationally.
Nice.
At that level as well for recognition. So awesome girl.
Are they taking their favorite teacher with them or? Where, where is that favorite teacher? She's way in the back.
Their favorite teacher has a choice. She can either continue to the trip to Hawaii. Or go to Washington DC instead.
All right.
So I'll leave that in her.
Okay, all right. Congratulations, girl. Congratulations. Next up, legislative recap. We have with us in the House, our Colorado House of Representatives, District Twenty, Don Wilson with us.
Well, thank you, Council. Thanks for having me. It's good to be here again. Let me start with my favorite teacher. We, uh, it was a rough legislative session. As you guys know, a lot of what went on was supposed to be for housing, was supposed to help smaller communities. What we actually saw was a lot of counterproductive legislation that worked against housing and against local communities. I do want to say, and I apologize for those of you who have attended some of my town halls, some of this will be repetitive. The program you guys are doing with the fountain with a state lobbyist working for smaller communities has been very effective. It helps me up there to know where you guys are at when we're running as fast as we can to get to the next bill or, or whatever we're doing that doesn't allow me to actually take time to contact you guys. So having a lobbyist up there working for you guys is a fantastic addition. I know it's been going on for a couple of years. Me and your lobbyist, William Munch, talked a couple of weeks ago. We're going to try to tweak a couple of little things on our end so that we can better communicate, especially at the end of session, where you know it's, it's almost a twenty-four hour cycle of just constantly being on the House floor. So I want to start with some bills that, that I felt kind of affect the municipal level. One of these bills is Senate Bill twenty-three, one sixty-six. It was the Establishment of the Wildlife Resiliency Code Board. This bill I was not in favor of. It has been signed by the governor and what it does is it creates another state board that is going to decide how you, how you build in your area depending on where you live according to the wildlife areas or the forest. And what codes they recommend to be put into place, kind of disregarding whatever you guys think or what you could have. One thing I argued on this bill is when the chief, uh, the Fire Chief Association testified on it, I asked them if these opportunities to get help from higher in the state existed and they said yes. So I asked if there is a state board for, needed for this, if the assets are already there. They felt that, that we do need a state board. Now, I did meet with the local fire or Monument Fire earlier the, last week. And they were not against this. They weren't, I wouldn't say they were necessarily, necessarily in favor of it. But they feel that Colorado does need a statewide, in a sense, fire chief in his department. I guess the majority of states have that. So this might have some value in it in that area. But I didn't see an actual reason for having an official state board for this. Uh, another item that I'm sure you guys are all aware of, this is one that many bureaucrats tend to like, but I don't think elected officials care for as much. And that was the first right of refusal. First right of refusal was anything with basically four dwelling units, you had to sell it to, you had to offer to sell it to your municipality first. This, this was a huge concern for especially ranchers, farmers, because a lot of them may have four units on their property for staff or family or, or whatever. This would require them to sell, offer it to the, the municipality or the county first. And that could take, you know, when you're trying to sell a house, that could take six months to a year for them to either decide to do it or get through the process. A, a big problem with this is a previous bill included the RV in your driveway as a unit. So there was a lot of concern of what they were going to consider four dwelling units in your commune or in your, on your property as far as what you had to offer to local government first. So, but the good thing about this bill, it was one that the governor vetoed. So one of ten that he vetoed, this was the most he ever, the most bills he has ever vetoed, in case you heard that recently. Some of the, some of the property rights, housing bills that will affect the growth of municipalities, and I know these conversations have been coming around when, okay, what happens when, when you develop certain number of units and they're not selling? Or, or other things happen. This is one of those other things. House Bill eleven-twenty, eviction protections for residential tenants. This creates a, a requirement that you have to work with any tenant that may not be paying their rent that is on any sort of assistance, any sort of housing assistance. The, uh, the bill does not do a whole lot because if they don't disclose that they're on assistance, then you have nothing holding you back from evicting them if they're not paying their, their rent. But if they are on assistance and you do know and they stop paying their rent, then you have to go through a whole bunch of jump through a bunch of hoops to, to evict them. This, uh, this bill is going to be very confusing to landlords. There was another bill and I'm not sure where that bill's at that did kind of the same thing, but it was for all tenants and required additional like payments and it made it really hard to end a lease, which could be problematic for basically our, really for a lot of our military families that might be deployed, rent their house out while they're deployed. But I have not heard where that bill's at yet. House Bill twelve fifty-five. This was one that me and Mayor Lacine were in contact on. We had many conversations on this with this, including your lobbyist, Mr. Munch. This is regulating local housing growth restrictions. This bill is, this bill is a nothing burger. The governor has not signed it yet. What it does is say that a municipality cannot say, we are not growing right now, no growth. We're stopping right here. We're restricting any growth. The, the problem with it is it allows you to restrict your growth based on any other reason. So you can't say, we're not growing right now because we don't want to grow right now. You can say we're not growing right now because we need to address water needs. And that's fine, or police needs or road needs. So the bill doesn't do anything. The bill's targeted towards, you know, there's two hundred and seventy municipalities in the state. There are four municipalities that have growth restrictions and these municipalities are still growing also. So I think this was a feel-good bill for somebody. The governor has not signed it yet, so we'll see what happens. Two more bills. These are a little more on the good side. County Treasurer, Senate Bill fifty-seven, the county treasurer no longer involved in district treasurer for drainage districts, irrigation districts, internal improvement districts. Before this bill, the the treasurer was the ex-officiato treasurer for the districts. This bill create, clarifies the role of the county treasurer relating to irrigation and drainage dishes. This is kind of clearing up some of the red tape. Not a big bill, but kind of gets the right people in where they need to be instead of having somebody that's not involved with a drainage district or irrigation district being in charge. So in the last bill, doesn't really affect municipalities, but it does help special districts, especially when it comes to water districts, is House Bill ten twenty-three, special district construction contracts. As you guys know, because you've been through it, when you go out to bid, oftentimes for a project, oftentimes you go out to bid and even knowing that there's only one person that can do the job or one company that can do the job, or only one company that will do the job. So you spend a lot of time going out to bid on something you already know the answer to. This bid raised the special district public notice or public bid from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand with a gradual kind of interest, inflation, upcrease, uptick every five years. The reason being is sixty thousand, this was done originally in, in the twenty-some years ago, twenty, thirty years ago. So sixty thousand is not going to cover any project, pretty much any construction project that you guys might be addressing that has limited resources to get done. Another area this helps is like fire districts. You might want a training shed. So you need a specific building and it might just be a small building, but you need to set it on fire every other week. To find somebody that can build that, you may know one person in the area or you may know there's only one opportunity in the area. So the last thing I'll leave, leave you with is three oh three and HH. I'm sure you guys have discussed this. This is the governor scam to take away your Tabor refunds and by giving you a small tax reduction. As you know, the county had, the county, well, multiple counties have joined, but El Paso County has joined. Working on the lawsuits with Advance Colorado. The first part of that lawsuit failed. It's going to the second the Supreme Court. The bill is so convoluted that no, not really anybody knows what's actually in the bill. In fact, we have a county assessor in our caucus, a former county assessor that now is a state representative. The bill changed so many times, nobody knew what it was actually going to do. And that was part of the lawsuit attempt was under Colorado Constitution, you're only allowed to have a piece of legislation that addresses one item. In this bill, it talks about lowering your property tax. It talks about taking care of special districts. It talks about moving your Tabor funds around. It talks about a lot of stuff that is not good for the community. So I would encourage you guys to consider joining one of those, those other governments working on this and where it's going to go from here. governments working on this and where it's going to go from here, because this will be very damaging to me uh. Senate Bill 303 and Proposition HH are a lot like that um that car salesman that says, hey, we can get you into this car today, let's not talk about interest in the future, let's not talk about taxes in the future, let's not talk about payments in the future. Let's just, let's just get you in this car right now. That's kind of the way it is. So um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you guys again for having me and feel free to reach out to me even beyond this with any further questions about state legislation going on.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Representative Wilson?
Sure, I got kind of a comment, sort of, anyway. Um, you, you and I talked about this, but if you would share with, with everybody where we think since Senate Bill 213 on the takeover of local control with regard to zoning practices, since it has failed, um, what you expect might happen?
My, my concern, and this is a personal concern, just from some of the rumors we're having uh from the governor's office, is it will come back, it will come back in a different form. And one reason we have put, kind of pushed for not, and before it had failed, we were pushing that we didn't, most of us didn't want a special session, because when you do a special session on zoning or property, or just calling it housing, it can encompass a lot of things. So the one thing we're worried, I'm worried about is it's going to come back next year, but it's not just going to be zoning and housing, it's going to include water, because water is a big talk among the state and how individual districts handle their water. There is this feeling that water should be basically run by the state, the state could probably do it better, is what they think. So I, my, my big concern now is that 213 will come back in a different form and maybe worse with some of uh, the water or or even further on the property rights.
Thank you. And then the other, just the other comment would be that regarding HH, that um it feels like it's extortion from the government level and that property tax rates will have the single highest increase in property taxes ever in this state um, for us, and you know, get a small reduction and then they'll take your Tabor refunds away from you.
Yes, and that is very true. And it's, it's the long-term harm, like you mentioned, it is the highest state tax or property tax hike we've ever seen, and they're offering to basically in a lot of ways, lower it by 1% and tell you that's a good deal. So.
Thank you very much.
Um, I had a couple things. There was one, there was one uh, around campaign finance that does impact the municipality. I don't remember the um, bill, but um, as, as home rule, we can still, if we wanted to, we could either go along with this reduction, which was uh, I believe individual contributions are now limited to $400 and um that was up from what they were originally going to do is 250. So it was unlimited, and then they brought it to 250 and then it went up to 400, and then I think uh, campaign committees up to 1,000. Or what was the name of it? Small donor committee, 1,000, 4,000?
Uh, yes, so it was up to 1,000. There is a statute. Um, so I was, I was part of getting that fixed. If you recall, they put a state level um, elections law into that bill. It wasn't appropriate, the bill was supposed to address basically issues on the municipal level. One thing that your staff knows that I've dealt with, with in the past is the municipality is kind of a um neglected on guidance on the state level or on the municipal level, that the clerk is left with minimal guidance on elections. And this bill was supposed to address some of that stuff. So they did put $250 was the max donation, we, we got it raised to $400. I felt going from no limit to 250 seemed kind of extreme. $400 is aligned with uh, state legislators and a lot of the other elected officials. So that did get changed. Um, and then there is a state statute that the it didn't get caught in the first, it didn't get caught in the first round, but there is a state statute that says uh, campaign committees. I think campaign committees or not campaign.
They called it small donor committee.
Small donor committees, small donor committees can give 10 times the individual. So it wasn't moving it from, I think it was 2,500, it wasn't moving it from 2,500 to 4,000. That was supposed to happen naturally to align with the 400. And that bill did get passed. The big point behind that bill was to solve what we had, what we saw happen in Florence a couple of years ago, where uh, a large, a large number of the board members resigned at the same time, and they didn't have enough for a quorum. They didn't have enough to appoint, they didn't have, they couldn't, they, they didn't have a quorum, so they could not do anything to make steps for towards reestablishing their board. And it also left their town clerk without any ability to do anything about it. She can't set a, a special election if there's no board to tell her to set special election. So that was the main purpose behind that bill.
And I think that whole council just up and walked out.
Um, and town manager too.
But I, but I believe we still, the Home Rule Charter can still establish their own guidelines, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, I got a, a little off topic there. Um, if a Home Rule Charter decides to go by the state statute, then they have to go by that. If they, if their charter has their own rules for elections, then they can go by that. So if you don't have anything in your charter, it'd be something you'd want to put in or, you know, hey, we're just going to use state statute. But if you have a certain way of doing your elections established, that way is still in effect and, and that's how you do your elections.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, anybody else? Council, anybody from staff had any questions? Thank you for being here, definitely appreciate and looking forward to uh, some more. Late night, early morning.
Yes, thank you. You, you testified at what, 11:00 PM?
Uh, it was late, it was, I think, uh, I think that between the two Zoom sessions, I spent 17 hours online waiting for my turn.
You should try being up there.
Huh?
You should be up there.
What, that's sitting there? No, no, no. I have a bathroom and I've got water bottles and soda and a TV. Plus I was working.
Thank, thank you for testifying and uh, Steve, you also testified.
Yeah, I waited for 10 hours.
Um, it actually, it does, it does help. And we saw the results of that when, when uh, Mr. Foreman testified against the marijuana bill last year. It works, it helps, and we need that to keep happening. And we, we also need you guys to be engaged, which you are with your lobbyists, but towards the end of the session there, things are happening fast. We don't get a chance to say, hey, can you come down to the Capitol for, you know, 15 hours or so? So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up is water project updates, Mr. Tharnish.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, give me just a second to bring up my, my nice pictures. All right, I uh, included a memo in your board packet uh, concerning the three major water projects that we have ongoing. And uh, one of them I didn't mention on here was the Monument Hill tank because it's still being um uh, looked at from a legal standpoint through the whole Comcast issue that's come up before. But the three that are in progress right now and are moving forward, uh, the first one is the 2 million gallon water tank located at 744 Forest U.A. Uh, the pictures that I'm going to show you now are various stages of construction, uh, not necessarily in order, because I wanted to kind of talk about since uh, two of these are connected in, in a lot of ways. The first picture you see on your screen here was one taken recently, uh, the first day that they were pouring the concrete for the tank floor. And as you can see, there's uh, tons of steel in the bottom of that tank in addition to the rock base that's underneath it. Uh, so that's the very first picture. This is the tank floor after it was poured. You can see a lot, I think there was a total of 32 concrete trucks that had to be poured in consecutive order. To get this floor, if they had to stop for any reason, then we would have had to have them remove what was poured because there's no joints allowed. So it would be continuous pour, so they had to time it between the daily rainstorms we had. This floor, uh, pour, this concrete pour started at 6:00 AM and I think ran till close to noon. So with these trucks one after the other coming in, uh, that was a big milestone to get that. Uh, right now, they're working on building staging to hold the wall forms when they start moving the walls in place, and that should occur in the next uh, next couple of weeks. I think the floor has to sit seven days to get that first cure point before they move on to the walls. There are some pictures coming up that'll show you the walls that were formed a few weeks prior to that. Uh, here's one during the actual pour, using a huge concrete pumper truck. And you can see how the crew, they had a large crew out there that day, uh, trying to beat the rainstorms that came later in the day. And the next one to have you, we're going to jump over to the pipeline project. This is a typical section of one of the 12-inch mains uh, with the shoring in place. And how they have to do it each section at a time and make the joints and any other connections that go with it. But it's uh, you can see it's a C900 pipe, um, blue standard for the industry uh, with all the things that come with it, the cathodic protection, the service connections and everything else associated with it. The um, here's an interesting picture they don't get to see too often, this is the boring machine. And I believe this one was when they bored underneath the rubber tracks. And that's what the machine looks like, and it's pretty deep, had to go way below, uh, I can't remember the footage from the rail line down. But it was in the, in the pretty deep area. And the next um picture you got showing here is the wall sections, what's neat about these is you can see they all got a slight curve to them. Depending where they're going to be placed and all the steel that goes into those. And next one is a close-up of the same panels. These were all poured a few weeks ahead of the floor, so that by the time they're ready, they can just lift them into place and seal them together. There's one more picture of the tank floor with all the steel laid out. Here's a little bigger bird's eye kind of view. Um, and here's one of the last ones, it's uh, where, an area where we had our two 12-inch lines in the same trench, 30 inches apart, and this is where they were prepping for the next section of pipe to go in. That gives you an idea of underground, what this, what this entire project is going to look like. And those are the pictures I had. I didn't show you any pictures of the wells because frankly, they'd be pretty boring. There's a 18-inch metal casing coming out of the ground with a cap on it. And now we're just waiting for the uh, wellhouses to complete design. And then we'll do another update once we get a little further along and show you what that looks like. And that's the update on the three major projects. If you have any questions, be more than willing to answer.
I, I don't see any pictures with you in them.
No, well, somebody had to take the picture.
Someone had to take the pictures.
Yeah. I'm not big on those, what do you call them, selfies with a holdup?
Selfie stick, selfie.
Yeah, my kids know.
Is there any questions from the council for Mr. Tharnish about the projects?
Uh, just a couple of timelines, I think, Tom, we're going to have the uh, wells online, probably the end of July, first of August. And then, is that true?
Well, they, depends on timing, right now the, the wellhouses uh.
They looked at me like, I don't know.
Well, the wellhouse design still needs to be approved by the state.
Right.
Uh, we still have pumps, motors and VFDs to water and they vary in timelines. We're, we're trying to get one of these online potentially if we're lucky, by the end of August. It just depends on timing of the equipment and approvals at the state level.
And then uh, the tank should be completed by?
Should, substantial completion date is in late October.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's usually a significant milestone where we can start putting water in it to do some of the testing and so on with that. And the pipeline project should be substantially complete. I think they're telling us mid-July, I would, I would look more for it late July. With all the weather we're getting, they get weather delays that occur off and on. Um, but hopefully by uh, October, when the tank is ready, the pipelines will be pressure tested and chlorinated and ready to put water in, into the tank.
So three major projects completed this year, about the end of November, all three of them will be completed, ready to go?
I would, I would hope so, unless some drastic changes, but that's the timeline.
No more drastic changes, please. All right, thank you, Mr. Tharnish. Uh, next up, we have public comment. Uh, individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. We moved seven up to the consent. Is there anybody here that would, all the way in the back, sir, if you come on down? And if you could state your name, so that we know who we're speaking with. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Forrest. And I am a resident of your city. And I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbors regarding uh, construction issue that's going on behind our house that I'm thinking a number of the people on council right now are aware of it. And they're probably working on it as best they can. And this is the uh, area right behind um Harness Road and the Remington Hill, Hill area. And it's been having ongoing issues with some severe flooding as well as uh, some dirt and sand issues and trespassing issues. So uh, my neighbors asked if, if I could come and just briefly talk to you about that and, and uh, bring it to council's attention. I know uh, I've seen some work out there being done, trying to mitigate the problems with the flooding. And flooding is very, very serious. And it's doing a lot of damage to the city's property as a result. And I know it's not going to be a short-term solution right now, it's going to be a long-term solution, but uh it's going to be something that I think down the line, it's going to be maybe litigious to the city and also some ethical issues, I would think, with uh, some of those lots that may be sold in the future with flooding uh, and um people not knowing that there was an issue there. One of the other uh, concerns that we have is folks have been using it for a uh basically a dirt pit, dirt, dirt track, four-wheeling. We've seen Jeeps back there and uh, we appreciate the police department because I've seen them back there and uh showing, showing some presence and, you know, high visibility always is a great deterrent to to anything that's going on, whether it be traffic related or crime related. And uh, I have seen cars back there, so I thank thank the police department for doing that, and I think it's helped. I think what would also help, and, and I ask for your consideration this too, is maybe posting some signs that would say maybe no trespassing and no unauthorized motor vehicles back there. Maybe at the entrances, it may give people a second thought when you're trying to to come in there and try to use that as a dirt track or a four-wheeling track, so um yeah, the flooding issues uh video has been sent, I believe, to Mr. Foreman and Mr. King, is that true?
I, I've received some, yes.
You've received some, okay. So I know you've been in correspondence with, with my neighbors on that, so um, but they asked me to come and just address it and, and just tell everybody on city council.
What, what street are you on?
I live on Sally Hill Court.
Oh, so you're on Sally Hill. Oh, so you're on Sally Hill also.
Yeah, so our, we have this basically three houses that are right at the end of the cul-de-sac that are right up against the the road that's going in there. There's nothing between the curb line and my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. And to the right of me, I guess you could say it's more to the south of me. They're getting a lot of flooding in there.
That's, that would be Erin's house?
That's it. Yeah, I didn't know that's going to be Bree's house.
Okay.
And then Erin is next where she's got the green belt behind her.
Yeah, I did, I did meet with her.
Okay, yeah.
And I have spoken with Brianna as well.
Good.
So the trespassing issues you're talking about, uh, those are the dirt bikes and Jeeps and stuff? Okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't something else.
No, no.
That wasn't you?
It could have been me. I've driven around out there too.
Could have been me and the mayor.
Yeah, sure. Once construction starts.
Not with a dirt bike though.
Yeah. And once construction starts back there, you're gonna have issues too with thefts and alike too. So having that high visibility back there is sure going to be a deterrent to anything going on. So um, but no, I, I know my three minutes is probably up. I just appreciate your time and, and your concern on this and and the short-term solution, um, I just got a email or a text, excuse me, from um, Bree about the sand and the dirt issue. And it was, it was addressed with seeding. Kind of put seeding down to try to address that.
Yeah, Mr. Foreman, maybe you could update everybody on what, what is, what's been talked about.
Definitely, uh, me and the mayor went out there Saturday during the rain and stuff and uh, looked at some of the flooding that's going on out there. But previous to that, uh, our town inspector, Tom Martinez, has been out there working with the contractors, working with their inspectors uh, to install um, barricades that will prevent the flooding. Uh, there's a lot of damage going into the wetlands area. We're working with that developer on the wetlands. Like you mentioned, this is going to be a long-term fix. Uh, we're, we had a meeting with the developer last week. Uh, the instructions from me to our inspector was to tell him he's going to have to recede the entire area. And also we're going to require him to pave the roads. Uh, because we believe that he's probably not going to build the houses uh, this year, probably put them off till at least next year due to the economy. So we're going to make him do as much as we can. Uh, if he refuses to do that, we have a bond. And so the town can step in and do the work for him.
And, and just to add to that, um, because of this, the process that has to go on right now, it's like, um, because the town doesn't own the property. So the property owner has to take a first crack at it before he can cash in their bond to do it. So it, it is a process, but um, it definitely needs to be mitigated as soon as possible. And you know, I, like I said, I was up there. I did see what was going on and and, and I'm a hundred percent on board with you. It's just, there is a process that you're gonna have to probably go through.
It's pretty serious, especially if you're gonna put a road in there.
Yeah.
And that water is just gonna wipe it right out unfortunately.
Yeah, a lot of the issues were caused by, you know, the EPA has regulations to where you have to put those socks in front of the storm drains. So when that first storm came, the storm drains were blocked by the s- storm socks. And so required by the EPA, we got a special exception to be able to remove those so that the water can flow the way it was supposed to flow, although it does create more silting further downstream. And so we're trying to address both of those issues.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm sure I do appreciate it.
And I really appreciate the council and the mayor going out there. I know they've knocked on a lot of doors, talked to a lot of citizens out there and tried to alleviate some of their concerns. And so uh, we really appreciate them doing that.
Appreciate that too. That means a lot when you come out and do that yourself and.
Well, you're, you're the eyes and ears, so.
I was a passenger. I was, he just got out and started knocking on doors. I'm like, whoa, what's going on?
Wanted to introduce the mayor to the citizens, you know?
I did go in the backyard of uh, whose, whose house was it?
I think you were in Brianna's.
Brianna's house and saw firsthand what's going on. And it is quite the mess and we will make sure the developer is going to either make do or lose his bonds, one of the two.
And, and you, you and, and your neighbors are the eyes and ears because we don't drive that every day. So
Yes.
Um, you know, you, you can get our emails and you probably have Mr. Foreman's email, you know?
They've got my cell number. Call me.
Yeah, if stuff comes up meantime, or you want a status update or whatever, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time for our neighbors. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, is there anybody else uh, locally in, in the hall that has something they'd like to say? Okay, Mr. Anderson, do you have anybody online? Okay, uh, Erin, if you would like to come off mute and?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so this is Erin Melias. I actually live on Sally Hill Court. I thank Mr. Forrest for showing up in person today um, to talk to you guys about the issues happening with um, the amount of water. So um, I agree that, I totally appreciate the uh, reception for where you guys are with um, listening to us and understanding that there is a major water concern behind our houses. Um, the amount of water that I saw coming out of the cement pipes probably this last week was just immense and it's really just causing a ruckus. Um, and I agree that there's also probably a litigation issue with either against the probably builders in the future. Um, if anyone plans on building anywhere in that neighborhood um, and they plan on going anywhere deeper than uh, six feet, there's probably water running underneath them. And I, I think that there probably needs to be some additional research done there. Um, I think it's a huge ethical issue that that builder should deal with. Obviously not something the city, city needs to be involved with, but I think the, the builder net, definitely needs to be aware of that. Um, my, the corner of my property is being eroded and degraded because of how the city is dealing with or the builder, whomever, um, how all the water is flowing. And so, you know, to have a nice premium lot and then now it's falling apart. And Mr. King came out to my house and, and saw that firsthand himself. Um, it's just, it's not, um, it's unacceptable. So I appreciate you guys um, looking into it and all the things that you are doing. And um, just look forward to the progress that we can make going forward um, to hopefully alleviate some of this pain in the near future.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, I think we need to make sure that the developer is aware of their responsibilities of what they're doing to the existing residence property.
Oh, we have. Yeah, definitely. We're meeting with them every week. So, and, and with their contractors.
And, and one, and one thing to look at, and, and I don't know if um, how this would transpire, because I know everything's been engineered, but the, but the drainage patterns have changed up there. So if there's any way that they can relook at that and see if there's any type of better detention facilities or something that needs to be added to, to change, either change the flow or change the path. Um, I, you know, I, I tried to read the drainage study, but it's difficult to understand it best. But there's just a lot of, well, you saw it, there's a lot of.
Luckily, we just hired an employee that is a expert at this. Matter of fact, he, he well, he worked, he actually works with the World Bank doing this all over the world. And so uh, we took him out there today and we showed him this. He, he got the worst of the worst today. So the work, probably the worst tour in the world. So.
Well, maybe I'll, maybe I'll see if I can set up an appointment with him and talk to him as well, because I've been watching this for a while.
Definitely. We'll, I'd love to meet with you on that.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Anybody else online, Ms. Anderson? Okay, we will um, close out public comment. Move on to um, council authorization items. Uh, Ms. Erickson, you're up. You've got three.
So I would like to ask to have a presentation from Tri Lakes Cares on July seventeenth. And then on August seventh, El Paso County Parks would like to come and present about the proposed Northern um, nature center. And then also on August seventh, we would like to have a presentation from John Howe and Michael Winefield um, regarding the history of the Monument Cemetery.
Okay. Um, anybody on the council have any issues with those uh, presentations being made?
None.
Okay. There you go. Alright, next up, uh, we have council comments. Um, I've got one I'd like to make, uh, bring up. Um, it was brought to several members of the council's attention this morning that um, uh, construction was occurring throughout the town. Um, and today is a nationally recognized holiday, Juneteenth. Um, our code points out that uh, on nationally recognized holidays, um, construction is not to be taking place. Um, I believe Chief had some staff go out and um, make warnings or uh, discuss with the workers that they were not supposed to be out there and okay, um, probably next time. Now to come up and s- say what you wanted to say and into the, into the mic. That's okay. Um, but it, it came to my attention that uh, the, the town, um, this is the one holiday the town does not recognize. So uh, the point of me bringing this up was not to uh, go after construction workers or anything like that. It was to um, get the town into alignment with the federal calendar. And, and just provide direction if the council is in agreement that the town would recognize all federal holidays as holidays for the town where they would, you know, pay town staff and close, close for that day.
I just need direction from the council.
Right. So is there anybody that's?
Don't need a vote.
This would be one additional holiday that's not on the calendar.
Right.
Any issues with it? Nope.
We'll make that, we'll make that change for twenty twenty-four. Would you like to give them tomorrow off for today?
No. I had to ask. I had about fifteen employees say, do we get tomorrow off?
No, it doesn't work that. Nice try.
Tina, Tina wanted to know if she gets to vote.
Do you get to vote? Well, here's the thing, we only give direction to one person. So you all have to take it up with him afterward.
They're gonna throw me under the bus. Thank you, mayor.
But there's a bus out there someplace.
That's it. But uh, thank you to the mayor and the council for that. We really appreciate that. That helps us clarify some things that were told to us in the past and we really appreciate that.
And, and then I guess the only other thing about that would be is um, on national holidays, we, we need to make sure that that, that calendar list is given to all of our um, developers.
Right.
That they pass it down to their subs. Otherwise, the chief is going to be out there waiting.
That was the instruction given to the chief at about eight oh one this morning.
And for those that are in the audience that were disrupted, I apologize. I was, I was disrupted too. Someone immediately reached out and said, why are they working on Juneteenth? And I was like, who?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other comments?
Um, Mr. Foreman, I think that I, I, this is my assumption. Um, I have lived in the same house and drove Old Denver Road for a long time now. Bless you, Tina. Um, I think, I feel, I feel like the flooding, I mean, there's been excessive rain and I barely turning on my sprinkler. So I'm not complaining about that, but it's running down into Teach Out Creek. And you guys have, the town has put signs up and stuff like that, but I don't ever recall it being this bad. And it does make me wonder if it is caused by all the construction on the other side and that the folks that were speaking tonight, it's, they're feeling it too. And so something needs to be done.
Yeah, so I took the mayor on a tour Saturday of all the construction and everything. And we did identify where the water is beginning. And so we're direct, we're addressing that, but also at Teach Out Creek and Old Denver Road, like I mentioned earlier, uh, we're going to have to have a fix there. There, there's a drainage area there that is uh, dilapidated and we need to fix that. And so we'll be coming back to the council with a uh, prepared fix and a budget for that and a budget request. It'll have to be an adjustment to our budget because it's probably going to be, I would say in the neighborhood of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to fix that, but it has to be fixed. There's, there's no getting around it. And so, yes, you're correct. You're correct. Uh, staff's been looking at this for about three weeks now, ever since the first rain. Uh, and like you said, the police department, public works, everybody's been working together and ensure the motorists are safe.
Right.
But now we've got to come up with a plan. Uh, I think we have a plan to take care of the interim solution. But really the, the forecast for what we actually need to do is what's going to cost us the most money.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments from the council?
I do have a question. Um, dealing with development or staying in lines with water. Uh, but switching it to development. No, like uh, an example is Colorado Springs because of the growth in development, they've passed ordinance that states that uh, developers have to come to the table and have to show that there is a hundred and thirty percent water availability. Is that something that the town of Monument has looked at in the past? Or discussed? Or if not, I would like it to be discussed and potentially talk about an ordinance to hold developers accountable for the same thing. Because I think we need to be water-wise, water conscientious, um, and careful with future development.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else?
Yeah, I would be in line with looking at something like that as well.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, Colorado Springs ordinance directly impacts CSU, not the developers. So we would have to find out legally what we can do as a municipality. Obviously, we can control our own water. But I don't know, and will need some guidance on what we can control as far as Tribe use water, Woodmore water uh, for the time being, since they're the ones that currently service within the town boundaries.
And most of our new development will be serviced by those two entities.
Right. So I'm not opposed to us. I've just got to make sure that we are allowed to have a say.
And they're not Woodmore. Woodmore's working on the loop project with the town of Monument to bring more water to the town of Monument, but Tribe is working on their own project to bring water to the Tribe development through sea issue.
But once they, once they make that connection, then they'll probably be benefited by CSU's, CSU will have to provide that will serve of a hundred and thirty percent to Tribe.
Well, sure. Tribe has got their own water rights off the Arkansas.
Right. Right. Okay, so I um, I guess we can wait until the next meeting to hear back, unless you want to send an email to that effect. And we can let the council know via email what we can and cannot control. And then we can discuss a resolution. Is that good? Okay, any other council comments? If not, then um, Allison, uh, we have an executive session. Would you like to? Pick, is, well, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, and I suggest you make two separate motions. There are two executive sessions. So you can make each motion now and then you can do them consecutively.
Okay. You have a motion to move us into executive session.
So moved. Do you want to read them individually or wanted to support?
Should we read, we have to read them out, right?
Yes, you need a motion.
You, you said you want to do them both together and, or make two separate, or how did you say you wanted to do it?
Two separate motions.
Okay, I, I'll move to go to executive session pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B CRS for a conference with an in-town interim town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions relating to pending legal assignments.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, on that first motion, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That motion passes six to zero. And do I have a motion for the second component of the executive session?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to section 24 dash 6 dash 4024E CRS to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding town attorney legal services.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. On the second motion, Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That motion passes six zero. And before we go into executive session, um, if will we be able to adjourn directly or will we be coming back based on these executive sessions to make any decisions?
My instructions from Mr. Cole today was you can come back into regular session. Uh, take whatever action you decide, but also he would like to repost it for the next meeting and have you take that action again at the next meeting.
That was clear as mud.
So, so you, you'll come out of executive session. If you decide to take action, you can vote to take action tonight.
Okay.
Okay. And then, but just because of some legal issues that could occur in the future, he would be more comfortable if you came back again at the next meeting and make the same, make a resolution.
So can we just come back at the next one and?
You could.
And not vote twice?
You could definitely do it.
So then we will, we will adjourn immediately following the executive session, not come back into public. So
There you go.
Thank the audience for your attendance for tonight. We will take five minutes and then go into executive session. Five minute recess. Five minutes.